Good evening and welcome to the December 7, 2015 meeting of the Revere City Council. Will everyone please rise and salute the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will everyone please remain standing? We all know that 74 years ago today, December 7, 1941, the United States was attacked by naval and air forces of the Empire of Japan. Many Americans died during that attack, and subsequently many more during World War II. And not only did they suffer, but their families suffered tremendously. And throughout the years, we've had these situations. So I ask that we remember that this evening, and we also remember those men and women who stand guard as we stand here tonight, giving us our liberties to vote as we choose on this city council, who protect those liberties throughout the entire world. And we're very grateful for that, so we ask for a moment of silence. Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Roll Club, the members, Councilor Rego.
Here.
Here, Councilor Geno.
Here.
Here, Councilor Guanasso.
Here.
Here, Councilor Haas.
Here.
Here, Councilor McKenna.
Here.
Here, Councilor Morbido.
Here.
Here, Councilor Novoselsky.
Here.
Here, Councilor Patch.
Here.
Here, Councilor Riordan.
Here.
Here, Councilor Zambudo.
Here.
Here, and Council President Powers.
Here.
Here, quorum is present. Calendar item number one, a certificate of commendation will be awarded to Mr. Derek Cummings in recognition of his outstanding efforts and contributions in support of charitable endeavors on behalf of the children of the world.
Mr. Cummings.
Joining me tonight to offer this certificate of commendation is my colleague in government, Steve Riordan. I don't know Derek that well, but I have the occasion to come upon his dad, who happens to be a very, very proud person. And he offered out that there was something in the wind to give some sort of commendation to Derek, because he also received a humanitarian award from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, which was very impressive. And I have that here, and it's really something. So I think that possibly the city of Revere should be proud too, because they offer our son to the world, who's doing great things for our community and throughout the country. And he's even gone beyond, as you will hear when I say a little prepared text. So Derek, it's a great pleasure to have you here with us this evening.
Thank you.
Accompanied by my good colleague, Steve Riordan, and Council President John Powers. And what it will be, and what I will read to you, is some of what I know, the little knowledge that I have of this gentleman, which really signifies what a distinguished young man he is, and what a great representative of the city of Revere he is to the world. And it reads as follows, that Derek Cummings has been a Revere resident all his life. His love of music and being a songwriter, singer, lyricist, thousands have enjoyed his concerts from Brazil, New York, Atlanta, and even our Wonderland Ballroom, just to name a few. His thankful and humble message for people resonates around the globe. His soon-to-be-released song called "Boston Strong" will be playing in all stadiums as Steve Burton of Channel 4 called the Song Fanorama. But the most important part of Derek, which goes by the big, what he goes by the big name of, Big D, and I can see by his size that we refer to him as Big D, in his words, he writes in the messages it sends, "This song, Boston Strong," and a copy of what humanitarian is, it also provides, he also provides 15 percent of his concert profits to his mother's village in Brazil, which is an admirable thing to do, to help hundreds of children for food, lodging, and everyday living. So Derek, it's a great honor to have you among us today, and to give you this presentation. And I will read the citation as it appears. And this is a certificate of commendation. In acknowledgement and gratitude of your international-recognized charitable endeavors accomplished throughout your music career, especially within the Brazilian community, touching the hearts of those in Brazil and in the Boston area, and most recently with your latest hit song, "Boston Strong," special recognition is hereby afforded to Derek "Big D Cummings", BTF Entertainment. The city of Revere, Massachusetts is proud to have such a talented, thoughtful, and ambitious young man representing the community in which he lives. On behalf of the citizens of Revere, Massachusetts, we thank you and hope your music career continues to flourish, just as how you have helped other young folks in Brazil and in the Boston area succeed. This certificate of commendation is presented by the Revere City Council, the city of Revere, Massachusetts, on behalf of its citizens, the 7th day of December in the year of our Lord, 2015, and the Independence of the United States of America, the 239. Signed by a city clerk, Ashley E. Wellnick. Signed by John F. Powers, City Council President. Motion offered by Council Arthur F. Guanasso and Stephen F. Riordan. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Stephen.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Would you like to take some pictures?
Sure.
I bet you're from the Brazil newspaper.
Congratulations, good job. Keep it going.
Thank you.
Hope you inspire the rest of our community.
Thank you.
Calendar item number two, hearing called is ordered on the application of Bell Atlantic Mobile of Massachusetts, seeking permission from the Revere City Council to install a telecommunications facility consisting of 16-panel array of antennas and associated equipment mounted on the rooftop at 10 Yaman Street.
State your name and address, please.
Thank you, Mr. President, and council members. My state manager.
Thank you, Mr. President and council members. For the record, Victor Minugian from McLean Middleton, on behalf of Verizon Wireless. I have with me tonight, from my firm, my colleague Elizabeth Mason. I have Brendan Gill from Structure Consulting Group, who's the real estate acquisition specialist for this site. I have Daniel Brown from C Squared Systems, that prepared the radio frequency report in your package, and Ron Pennumped from Hudson Design Group, who did the drawings that are before you tonight. Also with us tonight is Rick Costa, the manager of Broadway Revere LLC, for the first matter I have on tonight, which is 10 Yaman Street. We're asking for a special permit from the city council tonight. We appeared before the site plan review committee on March 3 of this year, and their decision, which is in my packet, said we would have to appear before this body for a special permit. What we're seeking to install is on the rooftop of the property right across the street, it'll consist of 16-panel array of antennas and related equipment, four junction boxes, and 16 radio remote heads. The antennas will be in fiberglass photo chimneys, as depicted in the drawings and the photo sims. The brick facade will match exactly the brick facade of the building, so we hope it will blend in really well. And the reason we need this site is due to the large distances between existing Verizon sites in the area and in Revere. There isn't sufficient coverage and capacity, so if we get this line on, if we get this site online, it'll improve the areas of Broadway between Proctor Ave and Revere Beach Parkway, Beach Street between Broadway and Central Ave, Mountain Ave, Winthrop Ave, Park Ave, Central Ave, as I stated before, and all the surrounding roads and businesses in the town and the neighborhoods. And that's our short presentation. We'll open it up to any questions that the council may have.
Any other proponents wishing to speak on this? Hearing none, I'll close that side of the hearing. Opponents, anyone opposed to this? State your name and address, please.
Stephanie, this is 07 Reservoir Ave. I am here by myself, I haven't brought anybody with me, and I'm the direct abutter. This property does not abut any other residential properties directly, except for my home and another property on Yaman Street that Mr. Russo also owns. He's the owner of 10 Yaman Street. I'm opposed to this for one reason. My house is less than 10 feet away, on the side yard, from location number four, which is the chimney that they want to put on the Reservoir Ave side, which, if you have these, Page 12 and 13. I'm just concerned about having this 10-by-11-by-3 structure overpowering and overshadowing my home, and I'm also concerned about the fact that I don't, I have no idea what the wind resistance is of these, but I can tell you, when we get a northeast of the wind whips right around that corner and comes right over the roof of 10 Yaman Street, up over to Reservoir, I'm concerned about the potential for that to fall over and strike my house, because, like I say, my side yard is less than 10 feet from the corner of 10 Yaman Street. I did want to thank Mr. Minugian, who was kind enough to take several of my phone calls, and he provided the drawings and the photographs for me, and also to Mr. Russo, who did speak with me over the phone several times. But I understand the need for additional telecommunications. At first, when I saw this, I was overwhelmed by the scope of this, that there's going to be three of these chimneys on top of that one building. And I just wanted to remind the council that this is a residential neighborhood. We might be, we might be directly abutting the central business district, but these still are our homes. And I know Mr. Minugian has kindly provided me the information that there's no way that they can make the height of those chimneys, at least in location four, lower, but I'm hoping that maybe there's a way that they can do something to make that become a reality for me. So I did not want to not appear tonight, just to state my concerns on the record about that location number four. And I did have concerns about the generator noise and the lights that they're going to have on the top of the building, and I'm assured by Mr. Minugian that the lights will be directed away from my property, and that the noise from the generator will be minimal. But I'm hoping that when this goes to the zoning subcommittee, that they would take that into consideration. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, I'm sure they will take those concerns into consideration. Are there any other opponents here this evening? Opponents. Hearing none, I'll close that side of the hearing. Counselors. Councilor McKenna.
Mr. President, I just would like to ask, I don't know his name, could you state your name again, I'm sorry?
I'm Minugian.
Minugian. If you do proceed with this, is there any insurance or compensation if this, if her concerns are, a wind comes or a storm comes, and it blows over and it hits her house, do you have insurance that would cover this, her damage or compensation, any kind?
Absolutely. Verizon would have insurance to cover their equipment falling and damaging any property, and a landowner would have insurance too, absolutely.
Okay.
And I did want to add that we are in a, it's not, we're in the central business district, we're in a CB zone. She said we're in a residential area, but yes, the insurance would cover that, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor McKenna. Any other counselors? Counselor Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President, just really briefly, for the edification of Stephanie, who was a good friend and someone who's always looking out for the city. I will ask the applicant to make sure they have something from a structural engineer telling us how safe and sound these will be installed, so there'll be no chance of them blowing over. And I'm sure they can provide us with that. Verizon has many structural engineers on staff, and they can give us a drawing and explain to us why this is completely safe and will not hit your house ever. Thank you.
Any other counselors? Council Riordan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I went through the packet, I did not see it, I may have missed it, but I'm wondering if you have a schematic from directly overhead of the building, showing the depth of the chimneys within the confines of the footprints of the building? If there's one in there, fine, otherwise, I believe this is going to go to zoning, and if it does, bring that with you.
An aerial shot, we don't have, we can get one.
A schematic, I don't necessarily need a picture, but a schematic of what, where the...
Just a drawing.
A drawing where it's going to be, from an overhead point of view and the dimensions, indicating the dimensions as to the edge of the building.
On sheet A1 of the plans, is that through what you're requesting? If not, we will get it for zoning. Yeah, I believe A1 is the roof shot that shows what you're asking for, Counselor.
Any other counselors wishing to speak on this? Zoning Subcommittee.
Calendar item number three, hearing called is ordered on the application of Bell Atlantic Mobile of Massachusetts, seeking permission from the Revere City Council to install a telecommunications facility consisting of nine-panel array antennas and associated equipment mounted on the rooftop at 4 Malden Street.
Proponents.
Thank you again, Mr. President. For the record, Victor Minugian from McLean Middleton. This property is located, again, for Verizon Wireless, sorry, this property is located in the general business district, and again, we're following under 17.16.110, under your zoning ordinances, towers, and telecommunications facilities, and again, under C2 for this site, this would also be allowed by a special permit from this body. And again, this is a little different than the other one, as far as the installation. What we're proposing here are nine-panel antennas instead of the 12, but, so there'll be three arrays of antennas. These are pipe-style to match the two other existing carriers on the roof. There'll be three arrays, one area will have one tall one and two short ones stacked. Ours will be painted to match the existing brick facade. Sprint's already on there, theirs are painted red, and AT&amp;T's on there, theirs are white, all the same style. And again, we need this to cover a capacity and coverage issue, this time from Broadway to Cushing Ave and Brown Traffic Circle Rotary, Revere Street between Broadway and the American Legion Highway, Malden Street between Patriot Parkway and Broadway, and also the surrounding roads, neighborhoods, and businesses. Again, for the same reasons, we would ask that you approve this and send it to the zoning subcommittee.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other proponents? Hearing none, I'll close that side of the hearing. Opponents, anyone opposed to this? Hearing none, I'll close that side of the hearing. Counselors, Councilor Guanasso.
Thank you, Mr. President. What are we getting here on 4 Malden Street? We already have two carriers up on there already. This is getting to be a satellite area for the whole city. I go by it on a daily basis, and I'm not pleased with what I see, and I know initially we talked about how we could hide some of the pipes as you proceed down Broadway. I'm going to go over this in detail at Subcommittee, Mr. President, because certainly I am not happy with an additional amount going into that little area. Going to add nine panels, three junction boxes, and six remote radio heads. The top of that roof, I'm telling you, is getting to be very unsightly. Initially, we said, oh yeah, we'll go up, they will put one, there'll be camouflage, you won't be able to see it, but it's evident, you go down Broadway, you do see it, and I'm concerned about it. So I want to go over this in further detail at Subcommittee. I look forward to being there.
Thank you, Councilor Guanasso. Any other counselors wanting to speak on this? Hearing none, I'll close that side of the hearing, this is a zoning Subcommittee.
Calendar item number four is the report of the zoning Subcommittee.
Council Riordan.
Thank you, Mr. President. This evening, we had two matters come before the zoning Subcommittee. The first was a petition to amend the zoning ordinance of the city of Revere. It's caption CZ-15-04, and this is to amend Title 17 of the revised ordinance of the city of Revere and the zoning map provided by section 1712020 of said title. They hereby propose to be amended to changing the zoning district designation of the parcel or land identified as Lot 9A on that certain plan entitled subdivision plan of land of Revere in Mass dated June 11, 2015, and recorded with the Suffolk County Registry of Deeds in Plan Book 2015, page 457, from the residential B district to the general business district. The proponent appeared through his attorney this evening. This is a very small parcel of land. The Subcommittee reported out the zoning change, recommended the approval of the zoning change by this body. I would also like to mention that the planning board voted to favorably recommend the adoption of the proposed zoning map amendment, so I give it to the city council for a vote.
Call the roll, please.
Shall the city council grant the relief requested by the petitioner to amend the zoning map by changing Lot 9A on East Mountain Avenue from residential B to the general business district? Councilor Rego?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Geno?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Haas?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Morbido?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Patch?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Riordan?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Powers?
Yes.
Yes, the amendment has been approved.
Mr. President, the second matter before the zoning Subcommittee this evening is the matter entitled C-15-12. It also refers to C-13-19 from 2013, a prior application by what is essentially the same applicant, and this is an application of Kathleen Donovan, Secretary of the Wellness Connection of Massachusetts, Inc., at 44 Railroad Street in Revere, seeking permission from the Revere City Council to operate a medical marijuana treatment center on Lot A at 44 Railroad Street in Revere. This is required by our zoning through a special permit. I should mention at this juncture that site plan review has chimed in on this matter and has made several recommendations. I understand that Councilor Rego would like to question the applicant regarding mitigation. But let me read the site plan review recommendations first. Number one, the site plan shall provide a locust map showing the minimum setback radius of 400 feet from the principal entrance of the medical marijuana treatment center. Within this 400-feet radius, there shall be no residential uses, parks, playgrounds, including areas designated as areas of critical environmental concern, schools, building structures used for religious purposes in public schools. The 400-foot radius shall be measured from the principal entrance of the medical marijuana treatment center to the closest property line of the above referenced uses. Two, the parking lot shall be cleared of all trucks and trailers and should be striped for 88 parking spaces, including four spaces designated for handicap parking. Three, the site shall include pavement markings for the designated driveway entrance for two-way traffic, including pavement marking arrows showing traffic circulation within the parking lot in accordance with the site plan dated November 12, 2013, prepared by J. Giroux, PLS. Four, the entrance shall include signage designating entrance and exit to the site. Five, a standing accessory sign shall be installed in a landscaped island at the entrance drive and shall be set back at least 10 feet from the right of way. The accessory sign shall be a low-profile sign to be approved by the site plan review committee in accordance with city of Revere ordinance dimensional controls. Fencing shall be installed around the perimeter at the site and shall be a minimum of 10 feet in height. Two security gates shall be installed at the site. The first gate shall be at the entrance of the customer parking lot, and the second gate shall be installed at the entrance of the employee parking lot. All security gates shall be minimum of 10 feet in height. Seven, the site shall be appropriately illuminated, including all entrances to the building's parking lot. And entrance driveways illumination shall be provided by attached floodlights to the building and free-standing light poles to be provided on the final site plan. Eight, both interior and exterior security cameras shall be installed at the site in accordance with the Department of Public Health and Revere Police Department requirements. Nine, the final plan shall be reviewed and approved by the fire department for the suppression and detection system requirements. Mr. President, this matter was the subject of some debate this evening. The Subcommittee did not take a vote one way or the other regarding recommendation, so I leave it to the full city council to vote on the petition.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before we do vote, I want to state my reasons for voting for this, and I understand that may not be popular with a lot of people up here. I look at the vote that was taken in the city, 8,762 people voted in favor of that, 6,445 voted no. So that's 2,300-odd people that felt more positive than those who were opposed. But I'm going to vote for this for some other reasons. Back in 1999, I lost my wife to cancer, lung cancer, and I watched her suffer, day after day, trips back and forth to the Mass General. It wasn't a pleasant thing, and I'm sure there are many of you out there that maybe are opponents of this, that had that same experience. are opponents of this that had that same experience with a loved one. Sixty-three years old, my daughter in Florida, fifty-nine years old, same thing, lung cancer. Suffered, suffered, and suffered. So I think that if this helps any patient in their final hours to get some relief, I think it's something that should happen. You can go into any doctor today in this Commonwealth and go doctor shopping and get prescriptions for things that are much more addictive than marijuana. And it's being done day after day after day. I think what's incumbent upon the Commonwealth to do, and perhaps even throughout the country because of the drug problem that we have, this drug problem just didn't start today. It's gone on for years. And I think that there should be some type of a database set up with the technology that we have today where if a person were to go to get, whether it be Klonopins or whatever the case may be, they show an ID. It has their name, their picture, their social security number, their date of birth on it. And when a prescription is issued, that be put into a database so that when that individual leaves the place in Revere or Chelsea and says, well, I'm going to Lynn and get to see another doctor and get another prescription, that wouldn't happen. And I think that would help cut down an awful lot of the addiction in Revere and Massachusetts and across this country. So I have my own reasons for voting for this, and I will be supporting this this evening. And if there are any other counselors that would like to... Counselor Rigo?
Thank you, Mr. President. The issue of medical marijuana is obviously one that the voters spoke on in the Commonwealth, and it's actually one that I've had a lot of experience with in my previous experience in Washington, D.C. When I was working for the City Council down there, I actually worked for the council member who wrote the legislation that passed medical marijuana in Washington, D.C. And I worked very closely on that bill and getting that up and running in D.C. And in that experience, I met hundreds of people in the district who were positively impacted by medical marijuana. And the personal stories that you hear, and Counsel Powers, Mr. President Powers alluded to that, and I think knowing those stories and getting the opportunity to meet those people and understanding what changed their life would be, or how their life would be changed based on the medicinal marijuana was eye-opening. Because I, you know, I'm a Revere kid. I grew up, you know, in Oak Island, which is probably one of the areas hit hardest by some of the drug issues that we have in the city. And, you know, I've seen friends of mine struggle with addiction. But with all that said, this is a zoning issue, and I voted on it before and voted for it. The one issue that I do want to address in my new role, hopefully I have an opportunity to, if this does pass and we move forward, and I'd like to hear from council whether or not there'll be a host community agreement or some type of conditions that could be placed on the permit based on a host community agreement or some kind of agreement that could be made between the city and the applicant.
Through you, Mr. President, Mayor-elect. Rigo. Last time I was before the council in two thousand and thirteen on this issue, Stephen Reardon and I talked about this at length, Counselor Reardon. He raised this issue, and we had made the commitment then, and we'll reiterate the commitment, that if we're licensed, we will come back before the council, you can make it a condition or not a condition or whatever, and we will talk about an array of mitigation. I know that Kay Donovan said it once already and will say it again, we expect to be involved with local groups, we expect to put money into counseling, and we expect to put money into education. But to the extent that the council wants a number, that, you know, percentage or whatever, those are things we need to negotiate. We're going to be a fledgling business, so we'd like to be able to make sure we start out together on equal footing, that we can provide what you're asking and we can accomplish the goals that you seek to have us accomplish.
And so I guess the question is, do we, can we amend whatever's before us to make sure that there is a host community agreement or some kind of mitigation agreement that is in place so that we don't get to a point where we may be negotiating and there's not an agreement on what can be done?
So Counselor Rigo, you're making a motion to amend the agreement to include a host community agreement. Am I correct?
I want to make sure that host community agreement is part of the special permit.
And this money be used specifically for education, drug education?
I think the details of the agreement should be probably hashed out between the executive and the applicant, but, and maybe brought before the council if need be. But like I said, in my future role, I look forward to, you know, making sure that the city is protected.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Counselor Novosolsky.
Thank you. Mr. President, I agree with Counselor Rigo, and I had that in my notes. Someone spoke about it last week at the public hearing about the education for the youth. And, you know, I had in my mind that $10,000 a year, but I'm willing, you know, I think what we should do is add it in as a condition rather than change the whole special permit. Just make it part of the conditions that they be required to come back to talk about these items, education, and the different things that you mentioned. But one thing I also wanted to add on was, I believe that medical marijuana is taxable.
It is.
It's a taxable item. So I want to make sure that that seven percent, that six and a quarter goes to the state and we get that point seven five, like we get all the other sales tax, you know, from all the other businesses. So and I think that, you know, that'll help us, plus the ten, you know, this is not part of the ten. This would be separate and additional to. So I think we ought to add it in the conditions that they come back if they get the permit from DPH, if I'm correct. That they come back to us and discuss it with a committee to bring up these additional conditions.
Thank you, Counselor Novosolsky. Counselor Gennino?
Thank you, Mr. President. I know a lot of my colleagues and a lot of the people here tonight have spoke many of the concerns and many of the facts regarding this issue, so I'm not going to be redundant. But I will say that it is a zoning issue, and the issue before us tonight is not about whether you agree or disagree with the form of treatment. I think it's safe to say and sad to say that every single person in this room has been touched in one way or another by cancer or by a disease like that, and every single person will have a different opinion on what you think the right treatment is or what the person suffering thought the right treatment was. And that's not a decision that anyone wants to make, and that's not a decision that this is about. This is about zoning. It's something that the Commonwealth voted on, it's something that our city voted on, and it's something that I served on the council when it was voted on and passed the last time. And unfortunately, we're in a situation now where the biggest thing now is safeguarding our city, as with many things. You know, when you look back at some other issues Revere has faced, like a casino, a lot of people didn't want that, and a lot of people talked about the impacts that would have on our youth and other impacts, and we didn't have a safeguard. We didn't have a host community agreement. And I think that Counselor Rigo's amendment is a great one because I think that to have that safeguard in place is saying that, you know, this is a group of people that are committed to educating our youth, that are committed to putting back into our educational system, to work with, whether it be local youth groups in churches or Revere Cares or the Power No at the high school, which I was a part of that group, but it's an amazing group at our high school. We need to be aware that these are people that are willing to work with that, and I think that we should not underestimate that, and we need to encourage that because our kids are going to be affected by this, no matter how we look at it. So we can either put it as something in a closet that we don't talk about that's bad, or we can talk about it and make it open and educate, and I'm all for education. Another issue is safety. You know, this is something that even safety officials are divided about, but we have one of the best police departments in the state. We can, you know, make a request that there is a police detail there 24/7. We can talk about what our police department's role is in this. And there are a lot of things that we still do have control over that we can make sure that this is safe and that this has positive impacts in our community, and I know that's really hard to see right now. I really, really do, and I respect that. And I was a kid that grew up in this community, and I know what I saw, okay? So I'm taking that into consideration. But from the perspective I stand tonight, it's about zoning, and that's how I'm looking at it. So I hope that you can respect our decision, and I hope that you can understand that we're going to do everything we can to protect our city and to make sure that regardless of the decision, that we have all of the security nets and educational promises that we need to make this go through as something that is going to, in the end, at least have a positive impact. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Gennino. Counselor Zambudo?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be very brief. I just want to clean up some of the language here. I think with the potential mitigation agreement, I think we need to say upon receiving a license from the state, because otherwise it's a moot point. So if that's added to the language, I think that needs to be there.
That's fine, but I think it has to be discussed, you know.
Yeah. We can work out the details after they get the license. If they don't get the license, there's no mitigation, obviously.
Obviously. Yeah. Any other counselors? Counselor Haas?
I voted for this in the past, and I will probably vote for it again this evening. Is there any way we can put a dollar amount on that?
Or percentage?
Yeah, why couldn't you put a percentage in that?
Well, I think that's something we can do when we, you know...
I think the chief executive will work that out when they come back to us.
I mean, you've got a lot of things you're talking about, safety, educating the children, you know, and for the kids.
Yeah, I think that'll be up to the mayor at that point, and to bring it before the council for us to agree on it, and we'll have open transparency, and there'll be nothing hidden anywhere, and everybody will know what is coming out of this. Any other counselors? Counselor Riden?
Mr. President, just for clarification, do I understand then that in addition to the site plan review recommendations, we are adding another recommendation that the special permit is issued on the condition that the applicant negotiate a mitigation agreement with the administration to address education as well as public safety issues as the administration sees fit?
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other counselors? Madam Clerk, call the roll, please. Counselor Guanasso?
You know, I mean, I understand even my best friends I disagree with sometimes, so, and that happens. And we all have a perspective, and you're right. Every one of us, I bet in here, has had an experience with medical marijuana. But as I said, and with all due respect, Jessica, I think we've been doing a pretty good job of educating our kids so far, and you personally have been involved in that. So I don't think we need them to educate our kids. We have the MGH, we have the school system, we have everybody else. But what does, I do understand what you meant, Jessica. I know that you want, and I understand what Brian wants, too. Accept that. What really, and Counselor Riden just put his finger right on it, what really upsets me is that if you are already talking about a mitigation experiment, agreement, and with all due respect, what happened with the casino and so forth, if you're already talking about that now, then you have made up your mind that, yes, there will be a letter of support. And I think you need to tell us that, yes, that everything we've said here, that you're not taking into consideration, you know? And if that's the case, okay, there's nothing we can do about that. But I think that amendment is too hasty, too quickly decided upon, and not in our best interest. But of course, I'm for medical marijuana. I voted for it. I just do not want it in Revere.
Yeah.
Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Wait, hold on. So with this amendment, so if we vote it down, technically moving forward, if this passes, there will be no conditions in it, correct? No?
No.
If it, if, exactly, but say if you're voting no, you're voting against those conditions, correct?
No.
How is that possible?
We made it part of the...
Yes, but I'm against this. If I'm voting no, I'm voting against your amendments.
That's your first...
Yeah. It's too premature. I vote to get rid of the amendment for right now.
Call the roll, please.
Do we clarify what we're calling along? The roll call is, it's the relief requested by the petitioner, subject to the findings and conditions of Site Plan Review and the City Council, the amendment that was just offered by Counselor Rigo.
It's part of that.
It's the special permit subject to those conditions.
Yeah, exactly. Call the roll, please.
Shall the City Council grant the relief requested by the petitioner, subject to the findings and conditions of Site Plan Review and the City Council on special permit C dash fifteen dash twelve at Forty-four Railroad Ave? Counselor Rigo?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Gennino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Haas?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
No.
No, Counselor Morbido?
Nope.
No, Counselor Novosolsky?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Patch?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Reardon?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Powers?
Yes.
Yes, the special permit has been granted, subject to the findings and conditions of Site Plan Review and the City Council.
Counsel President, can we suspend the rules and file reconsideration, please?
Yes.
Still in law prevail?
Reconsideration, yeah.
Reconsideration fails?
Reconsideration, yeah.
Thank you.
Regular order of business.
Yeah, it's the Site Plan Review. Calendar item number five is the communication from Site Plan Review relative to findings and conditions for Forty-four Railroad Ave.
That's about a special permit. Make it part of the special permit. The next one...
Calendar item number six, communication from the Planning and Community Development Office relative to its recommendation for the proposed zoning amendment of Lot Nine A, East Mountain Ave.
Same thing, Mr. President. Add it on to the original.
Calendar item number seven, communication from Joseph A. Festa, Joseph Festa Construction Company, proposing a donation of land, lots one oh four through one sixteen, Bates Street.
Any counselors want to speak on this? No, we can vote on it. Motion, accept?
Motion, accept.
Okay. Vote, roll call.
Shall the City Council accept the donation of land from Joseph Festa Construction Company Inc., described as Bates Street, lots one oh four through one sixteen? Counselor Rigo?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Gennino? Yes, Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Haas?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morbido?
Counselor Morbido?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novosolsky?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Patch?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Reardon?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo?
Is absent.
Council President Powers?
Yes.
Yes, the donation of land has been accepted.
Okay, what's next?
Calendar item number eight, communication from the Director of Veteran Services requesting the installation of a veteran memorial at the corner of Delano Avenue and the Linway in honor of Army Private First Class Charles R. Ducevich.
Call the roll.
Mr. President, is this the same one from last week that you had? There's a different one.
Is that guy still alive?
This is, this is the way that it should be done.
That guy's still alive last week.
Which guy? Still alive, and you want to put up a memorial for him?
Call the roll, please.
Mr. President?
What do you want to know? I mean, it's right here in black and white. This guy, no, this guy's passed away. This guy, no, this guy's passed away.
Okay.
We're gonna, we're gonna take a vote.
This one was done properly, then?
No, it isn't.
Yeah, it is done properly. It came in from the Director of Veteran Services to the council.
Call the roll, please.
Roll call on the memorial for Army Private First Class Charles R. Ducevich. Councilor Rego.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Gino.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Haas.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Morabito.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Novoselfsky.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Patch.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Riordan.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Powers.
Yes.
Yes, the memorial has been approved. Calendar item number nine, motion presented by Councilor Rego that the mayor institute a freeze on all hiring and appointments to be implemented through January 4th, 2016.
Councilor Rego.
Thank you, Mr. President. This motion is standard practice after a mayoral election. I just want to prevent any last-minute personnel appointments or hirings that might be made during a lame-duck mayorship. I would like to mention, though, that, and I heard some concern from the fire department, that they were worried that their promotions would not move forward. That is not the case. I'm not putting a freeze on any promotions. This is just hot, new hires and any new appointments that would be made by the mayor's office. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Rego. Any other councilors want to speak on this?
I think I said I did, Mr. President. Didn't you acknowledge me? Now you're bypassing me? You're trying to get back at me because I'm making you look bad?
You get one get out of jail card free.
Yeah, I get more than one out of jail. Mr. President, I thank Councilor Rego for clarifying that, because I got several calls on that fire department promotion list, so I thank him for clarifying it. Thank you.
On the motion, so audit.
Calendar item number 10, motion presented by Councilor Rego that a certificate of commendation be awarded to Saber Abu Galala for donating Thanksgiving dinners to the First Congressional Church. I'm sorry about the pronunciation.
Any councilors? Councilor Rego.
Mr. President, I'll hold my remarks for the award presentation.
Any other councilors? Councilor Novoselfsky?
Yes.
Councilor Zambudo?
I just want to say that this gentleman is extremely generous to our seniors and to anybody in need, so he certainly deserves it. I applaud the council for putting the motion in.
Any other councilors? On the motion, so audit.
Calendar item number 11, motion presented by Councilor McKenna that the mayor requests the traffic commission to place two stop signs on the corner of Vinyl Street and Haddon Street, one facing Vinyl Street and one facing Revere Beach Parkway. The two signs will slow down traffic cutting through Vinyl Street, which is a major problem with cars speeding through that neighborhood.
Councilor McKenna.
This really speaks for itself. We, they, Vinyl Street is having a really, they're cutting through and going into Broadway, and it, the speed is, you know, it's just, it shouldn't be like that. So, I'm asking for a stop sign both ways to slow down the traffic.
Any other councilors want to speak on this? On the motion, so audit.
Calendar item number 15, motion presented by Councilor McKenna that the mayor requests the Department of Public Works to extend the yard waste pickup until the end of December. The unseasonably warm weather in November has not allowed for leaves to completely fall off the trees. This would help the Revere residents to fully clean up areas that would still be affected by leaves before the snow falls.
Councilor McKenna.
I know last year we had a very warm November and December, and what happened was when the snow fell, there were still leaves on the sidewalks, and there were still leaves on the streets, so what happened would, when people were using their snowblows, they would get caught. So, I'm just asking if we could just extend this for two weeks.
Any other councilors? Council Riden?
Just a friendly amendment. This is a very excellent, excellent motion, because not only because of the fact that it's warm, but many of the trees that we've planted over the years in Revere are designed to shed their leaves late. And the one in front of my house, I think it's one of those Chanticleer pears or whatever they have that Frank likes so much, it doesn't, it's, the tree right now has about half as many leaves as it did at the, at the point, high point of the summer. But I would suggest that we ask the administration to negotiate any necessary change in the contract with our rubbish contracts, because they're the ones to pick up the leaves. So, I'd add, I'd offer a friendly amendment to ask the, ask the administration to, to kind and quickly negotiate that.
I agree. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Councilor Zambudo.
I applaud Council McKenna for this motion. My, the tree in my backyard still hasn't shed its leaves yet either. I've been putting leaves out every week, so I'm, I think it can be accomplished with a phone call to the, to the waste carrier from the mayor's office.
Thank you, Council Zambudo. On the motion, so audit.
Calendar item number 13, motion presented by Councilor Zambudo in accordance with provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 233, Section 8, that the superintendent of Revere Public Schools be summoned to attend and testify at the next feasible meeting of the Revere City Council relative to actions taken against a student for a comment made in response to a teacher's question on social media.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, I hadn't, I hadn't intended to become famous on this issue. I was trying to protect the free speech of a student, and now I'm getting emails from across the country of people that are so angry at the school department for what they did. It's just, it's blossomed into an unbelievable thing here. I just want an explanation. It seems to be difficult to get this explanation, and so that's why I've gone to this final step here, to try to get an answer to what's going on. So, you know, people tell me that we have no business with the school department, and I dare say that if I held up the budget, we'd have something to say about the school department. This is, this is not, I'm not in a push-and-shove contest here. I simply want some information. I'm not looking to, in any way, impugn the integrity of the superintendent of schools or the principal. I just simply want answers. I don't think that's a lot to ask, but it seems to be. So, that's why I've gone to this extreme measure to ask my colleagues to support me. And I don't want to get into who has conflicts of interest and probably shouldn't vote on this or whatever. I'm just trying to get some help to get some information. So, I appreciate your indulgence. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Zambudo. Council Riden?
Well, I can agree with one thing, Council Zambudo, that this is extreme. First of all, I can almost assure you that the superintendent would come here with nothing to say, simply because she's required to maintain student confidentiality. A student isn't, but she is. And if I were, if I were advising her legally, I would say she absolutely has no, no requirement to bend to the subpoena, or if she did, to say anything at all. This is a total waste of time. This is a complete situation with the school department and how the school handles it. I will say this, one thing, if, if anything came good, came out of this good, it's that everybody, and I mean everybody, that's in that school system, hopefully, will eventually be introduced to some sensitivity when they start their high school process, because they are adults, or they're becoming adults, and they need to understand that people have feelings and that you have a right to say what you want, but you have, also have a requirement to use some common sense, and that despite the fact that you don't like what you hear from someone else, you have no right to threaten them. Those are the things that are, are basic to our understanding of the right of free speech, and everybody needs to understand that. And I'm certainly hope, and I, and I, my, my understanding is that there will be a program to sensitize all the kids when they're coming into the high school, at some point in their high school career, so that these things, when they happen, these reactions don't happen again. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Riden. Sure.
Joe Coco, 36th Street, Revere. I've been, I've been in Revere most of my life. Two kids graduated from Revere High, and I just want to say this. I'm up here because I'm expressing my freedom of speech, okay? Let's put aside the fact that this girl was denied her First Amendment right, which I have a copy I'd like to give to the principal and the superintendent, if they didn't have it. Now, just hear me out, just hear me out for a minute.
Also give it to the mayor. He's the chairman of the school committee.
Okay, but just hear me for one minute, okay, John? John, you and I have been friends for a long time. You're the best one, councilor, I've ever had in my district. I love you, but I have to disagree with you on this. This matter here, the most important thing out of this matter, and it's been taken further than out of districts, that this girl, and I seen it, because I got, I got friends that went to, that their kids go to school with this girl. I was notified right after it happened, and I called you, John, and you disagreed with me. You said, "It's got nothing to do with the council." I think anybody who says it doesn't, you're all wrong. This has to do with every official in Revere, because this is a girl, an American girl, that was, that was downgraded by other people. She had to run from hiding in school. I mean, come on, if it was one of your daughters, you know, did any of yous ever see A Time Kill? Well, it's, it's one of the best movies ever made. And you know something? I'd like you all to close your eyes and think that this might be one of your daughters or granddaughter. What would you do? If it was my daughter, I know what I would do. I'm just, I'm, I'm really mad about this, because you know something? This should have never happened. The principal, it should have started with the principal. When the principal, they went up to the principal, and the principal says to the girl, "Don't worry, it'll go over." I want to read you something. I, I'm sorry I have to wear glasses. Comes with getting older, I guess. This is, I took this out of the journal, and it's something that caught my eye, and had to read it over and over again. Dr. Kelly said she feels the situation is winding down a railing, and would have probably ended had, had not been for the city council motion on Monday. I'd like for it to be done. Of course she would, she said. I received numerous inquiries from all over the world. We all did. I think if it would have been done in the council, hadn't made it this, that motion, it would have been done. Well, you know something? I'm telling you all one thing right now, and you better believe this. If this was the other way around, the president might be here, okay? This is an American girl, and I'm asking you all, I know people in here have people that work within the school. I've been around. I mean, you guys have seen me up here a lot. I try to fight for the city with what I think is right.
Surely, I respect that.
Wait a minute, John, just one more minute, okay? This girl, just like I said, close your eyes and think of it being your daughter or granddaughter. And you know something? If this happened to her, she should have never been bullied by these kids. Kids have got expelled for the rest of the year for bullying like they did. I saw it on social media. I saw it myself. My, these kids, couple of the kids that went to school with her, I saw what they wrote on social media. They wanted to kill her. They want to do this. You know something? Nobody talks like that today. People are putting in, putting in jail for talking like that today. And I'm, I'm just asking you all, as a council, okay, that you all have to get involved with this and do something about it, because this is a shame, not only for us, being on Fox News and all over the radio, not only for us, but for our city. We have one of the greatest school systems around, and this is going to take us down. Believe me, this is not the end. And I'm asking you all to look into it further and side in with this girl, and make sure that these kids that put this dirty stuff on social media get punished.
Joey, just one minute, please. I understand your passion with regard to this issue, and I think we all share that passion. However, this is a school department matter, and it has to be dealt with under educational reform in the school department. We have no jurisdiction to punish anyone up here. On the other hand, there's a First Amendment right being violated. That's a situation for the federal government, U.S. Attorney's Office in Boston, to look into that and find out if, and I'm sure that's going to be done, but we can't, we can't have a student come up here or a superintendent or a principal and say, "Listen, I want you to suspend this one or that one." We can't do it. We don't have that power to do it.
All right, let me ask you all a question. If I write on social media that I'm going to kick the hell out of Toulon, okay? The police will be down my house in a minute. That's not freedom of speech, that's a threat. And that's what these kids did. They threatened her. They threatened this girl. Nobody threatens anybody today, and if you do, you pay the consequences. And, and, and you know what I say? The police department should be in front of this. They should be prosecuting these people.
Let me ask you a question. Have you been over to a school committee meeting with regard to this?
No, you know, since...
That's where you, that's where you belong.
I've been a lot closer than a lot of you people did. I know at least 10 kids that know all about this and showed me some, showed me. I saw what these kids wrote, and it's disgusting, threatening, threatening this kid. Why? Because she said she liked Donald Trump? I love Donald Trump. Because she said that 10% out of the, out of the people in Revere voted for the mayor because 90% of others were illegal? Well, that goes for all our surrounding communities. We're the minorities. I'm sorry.
Hello.
Hello, Council President and the council members. My name is Loretta Boggs. 4 Elm Street, Revere. I'm sorry I missed the session on drugs, because I'm thoroughly opposed, but by the time I got up here, we weren't allowed to speak. However, I do want to say this, that in the 1970s, when I was a member of the PTA at the Lincoln School, we invited all the city fathers up to address the drug problem that we had in this city. And do you know what? We were almost laughed out of the auditorium. And today, I don't know of any family that doesn't have somebody involved in drugs, die to drugs, or about to die on drugs. I'm thoroughly against putting, I don't care what they call it, the marijuana machine store in our city. And like they say, only in Revere. I've been, I was born here, and that's all I've ever heard. It only happens in Revere. Well, please, don't let it happen. I got people walking around my neighborhood like zombies. I call the Revere Police, and before I can get out what I want to say, they know these people. They don't do anything about them. Now, you can't make these stories up. They walk around, and they stop, and they jackknife, and you think they're going to hit the pavement. And I've been told that these are people who are on heroin, and then they use something else, and this is how they get affected. It's totally out of control. I don't know of any city or town in America that knows what to do about it now. But I'm very angry about it, because like I said, nobody wanted to address it way back in the 70s, and many a person has made a lot of money on people's lives, and it continues. Again, I'm thoroughly opposed to this, and they're going to grow it here. And I know of many a doctor that you could get this, that, and the other thing. That doesn't cut any ice with me. I've been around too long. Okay, I won't belabor that point, and thank you for letting me speak on it. I did not know you were going to bring up the incident at the school, and thankfully, I have my notes. And all I want to say is, most people in our society hold educators and people in the educational field in high esteem, but they also expect them to react to problems that may occur in a mature, educated, and a common sense way. I want to say that I applaud the actions of, and I hope I say her name correctly, Kaylee Godino, a Revere High School senior, and supportive actions of her mother, Lauren Kelly. This incident, however, has personally opened a five-year wound for me and my family, and while these two incidents... This incident, however, has personally opened a five-year wound for me and my family, and while these two incidents, and the answer to a question from a teacher and a physical assault are totally different in nature, they seemingly were handled in the same manner. Five years ago, when my granddaughter was a junior at Revere High, she was physically hit upon by two sisters and a friend of theirs. One of those sisters, my granddaughter thought was her friend. When she proceeded to defend herself, she, the victim, was labeled a bully by the administrators of the school. Because of ongoing threats to her safety and no help given to her by the authorities to offset these threats, her mother removed her from Revere High and placed her into Everett Excuse me. However, the labeling of being a bully preceded her to her new school, and it took a while for her fellow students, who by the way she was told at a later date, were cautiously afraid of her until they realized her character and that this label was totally wrong and untrue. She graduated from Everett High and went on to college. She is currently at Salem State University, seeking her bachelor's degree in criminal justice, while she manages a store at Logan Airport. We found with this incident, though, there was an atmosphere created by attitudes of some of the personnel at Revere High, including the informed, uniformed policemen on duty at the school at the time. And sadly, I see that now, five years after our experience, with the current latest unbelievable happening to this girl, this atmosphere still exists, exists. This has to change. We entrust our children's lives into the hands of people who we believe will educate and help mold them into productive and successful citizens, and don't expect these same authorities will do anything to break their spirit or interfere with them achieving the best lives possible. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Mrs. Vargas, for your, your concern and your interest in, in coming up here this evening. As I've said before, this is basically a school department matter, and as far as First Amendment rights, that's a violation of the federal constitution and should be addressed in that manner. Once again, thank you very much for coming up here. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Councilor Zambudo?
Unfortunately, tonight I just got some new news that I didn't know about, because I didn't read the Revere Journal last week, but I find it appalling that the superintendent of schools would like to take away my First Amendment rights.
I don't, I don't think he wants to do that, sir.
It's a she, and I believe she did. If that's an accurate quote of what she said, that's proof in the pudding. Thank you.
I just want to apologize to everybody who looks at you guys. I just want to apologize for being upset, but I did it so badly.
Just let me, let me say this to you, Joey, okay? And I've said it before, as far as what happened in the school, this is a school department issue. We have absolutely no control over that. As far as violation of someone's First Amendment rights, there's a U.S. attorney that sits right in Boston, and I'm sure that if someone went in there representing this young lady, that they would listen to her and make a decision on what to do, where to go next.
I didn't say that. But what I'm saying is, you're fighting. Right?
Yeah, yeah.
On the motion, all in favor, so ordered. Roll call. Roll call on what? Oh, call the roll. What is the motion? Read the motion, please.
This was the motion by Councilor Zambudo. This was calendar item number 13, in accordance with the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 233, Section 8, that the superintendent of Revere Public Schools be summoned to attend and testify at the next feasible meeting of the Revere City Council relative to actions taken against a student for a comment made in response to a teacher's question on social media. Councilor Rigo?
No.
No, Councilor Gino?
No.
No, Councilor Guanasso? Yes. Councilor Haas? No. Councilor McKenna?
No.
No, Councilor Morabito?
No.
No, Councilor Novoselfsky?
No.
No, Councilor Patch?
No.
No, Councilor Reardon?
No.
No, Councilor Zambudo?
Yes, but I dare say that a lot of people should have recused themselves from going here tonight. A lot of those came from people whose children work in the school department.
That's, that's not in good taste, Counselor. Finish, finish the roll call, please.
Councilor Zambudo, yes. Council President Powers?
Yes.
Yes, the motion fails.
Point of information, Mr. President.
State your point.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Councilor Zambudo is more than welcome to attend the school committee meeting tomorrow afternoon at 4:00, I believe, so, and maybe discuss that.
And I think anybody...
Mr. President?
Councilor Novoselfsky?
Mr. President, in an, in an effort, Counselor, if I, if I may, we didn't interrupt you when you were talking. Thank you. Mr. President, first, first of all, I believe it belongs in the school department, but because of Councilor Zambudo's accusation, I'll be glad to recuse myself and vote present on that last vote.
I wasn't single when you voted.
Yeah, well, I was one of them. One of many.
Councilor Gino?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a quick point. I didn't know we were going to have to vote on that, but I just want to make it clear that that vote was not on our opinion regarding the issue. It was just on the principle of the motion to demand someone to appear before us. So, whether we agree or disagree with the issue, I think that's completely different circumstance, but that was just on the grounds of this motion, not about the issue.
My understanding is the only one that can order the superintendent to come up here as a school committee.
Mr. President?
You're not following the state law. You gave it the law, laid out right in that motion.
Councilor Patch?
You're good and do it, too.
Come on, Charlie, go ahead.
Thank you for noticing I wanted to speak. I'm going to have to accuse myself of present, change my vote to present, too, please, because of the acquisition.
Okay.
Same thing. You know.
Motion to adjourn.
No, no.
Motion to adjourn.
Point of order.
State your point.
I'd like to accuse myself of the previous vote, as...
I guess I'll have to accuse myself of the previous vote, because I've been a teacher for 33 years.
Council stand adjourned until the 14th of December at 6:00 PM, 2015.